I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready?
We're ready.
Number one. Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 1st, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye. Number two is... Do you want to read them and also?
Do you want to read them?
Yeah.
Financials today include supplemental corporations for the Public Assistance Fund for the summer youth employment program expenses and the Workforce Investment Act for cost reimbursement transfers, contract for URS corporations for construction services for the Thompson Vacuum Sewer and Wastewater Treatment Plant project in the amount of $166,001. Travel costs for the Auditors and Treasurers Office, the Department of Emergency Services, Job and Family Services, and Water Resources. Payment to Portage, Jogga County Juvenile Detention Center for the second quarter 2014 expenses in the amount of $113,170 and a payment to Business Marks for the Emergency Apparations Center computer upgrade project in the amount of $27,909.38.
Can I make the motion?
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye. Thank you, Heidi. How do you want to do this? Any suggestions?
You guys are next.
Come on, everybody.
Hazmat team.
Morning.
Hello. Good morning. I'd like to welcome Saint Obain's Crystal. They are making a donation to the Jogga County hazmat, to the local emergency planning committee and to the Jogga County hazmat team of two Level A suits, which are really very special. They're flame retardant suits. It takes the place of, actually, a two-suit method that we use at the county. We have a Level A suit and then a flash suit goes over the top of that. So it's cumbersome enough wearing a Level A suit, a fully encapsulated suit for a hazmat M3, but these two suits that they are donating to the hazmat team cost anywhere from $28, $2900 apiece. And the normal suit is about $900 plus another $1,000 for the flash suit, but these suits are top of the line and we sure appreciate the Saint Obain's Crystals, you know, making that donation. With me is Tim, Dave Sage from the LETC Chair and Scott Hildebrand, the President of the Chiefs Association, because the hazmat team runs under the Fire Chiefs Association and I'm the hazmat team coordinator for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, yep, happy to donate it and thank you for all your work.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Do you want to read number three? We don't have to read right here. We just do the other. Okay. They just did it.
No, I'm not.
You're not reading, uh... Okay. Kathy and Terrence. Good morning.
Hey, Commissioner, I'd love to introduce Terrence O'Neil. He's the Program Manager for ProAct Incorporated. And he's here to talk about our big rollout of our RX discount card for all the Jogga County residents today.
Perfect, thank you. Again, my name's Terrence O'Neil, I'm the Discount Card Program Manager. As mentioned, I'm here this morning because of the partnership between Jogga County and ProAct. Through this partnership, we were able to administer the completely free Jogga County prescription discount card, and I say completely free because it's free to the county and it's absolutely free to the residents. One of the ways we're able to administer this program with absolutely no cost is that ProAct actually, excuse me, foots the bill to market this program and part of our marketing scheme is actually a direct household mailing of discount cards. Cards are going to be mailed out today out of Syracuse, New York, and they'll start arriving in mailboxes towards the end of the week. The discount cards are going to be arriving pre-activated, so all a resident needs to do is take the card that is perforated in the card that's in front of you, go to your local pharmacy, and start saving. All pharmacies within Jogga County are going to be visited today. They're going to give a brief synopsis of how the program works, who it's for, and they're also going to be provided an inventory of discount cards. This is again in case a resident throws away a discount card and goes to the pharmacy and purchases a prescription at full price, this will ensure that they no longer have to pay the full cash price. The program is designed to be used for every resident within the county regardless of their age, income, or pre-existing health coverage. Again, the quick way to figure out if a resident's eligible for the program is if they were required to pay the full cash price, please use the discount card. Typically, the residents who don't have any kind of prescription coverage or who have minimal prescription coverage through their current employer are going to benefit the most from this program because they are the ones that are required to pay the full price for the prescriptions on a more regular basis. So this program cannot be used to discount copays or deductibles or anything like that, but in case an insured individual's prescription isn't covenanted or formulary, they are eligible to use the card and we encourage them to do so. We also encourage all residents to keep a discount card on hand when it arrives in the mail because there are also added benefits. We have discounts on vision services such as eye exams, frames, lenses. We have discounts on hearing services, including hearing aids, as well as low-cost access to LASIK procedures. The discount card program is also going to offer residents with no form of dental coverage an opportunity to purchase a low-cost dental access. This will provide them opportunities to get x-rays, tooth extractions, dental cleaning at a lower price if they didn't have any kind of insurance. Although this program is, again, designed to attack the financial burden that residents who don't have prescription insurance, it's actually going to be able to be utilized by all residents within the county. And finally, the question that always comes up towards presentations like that is who comes, where does this money come to, to provide these discounts? Ultimately, the program is funded by the local participating pharmacies. They've agreed to take a lower profit margin off of those residents who pay the full cash price in order to give back to the communities that they serve. It's no coincidence that those that don't have insurance tend to pay the most for their prescriptions and pharmacies tend to make the most money off of them, so they have the ability to give back to the community and make sure that those that need access to their prescription medications have the ability to do so.
When you talked about if we're insured and it's not a formulary drug, this would reduce the cost of that?
Correct.
Even if you were insured?
Yes. The way that works is if your medication isn't in your formulary...
Yeah.
Obviously, your insurance is going to cover it and they're going to ask for you to pay the full cash price. So all you need to do is give them the most frequent discount card.
Give the card and then you get this.
Absolutely. The savings are ranging from 10% to 20% off your name brand medications because those have less profit margin for the pharmacies, but most of your savings are going to come on your generics where we average anywhere between 28%, 7% off the full cash price.
That's a savings, even for those who have insurance, so it would, you know, it'll help everyone. That's really, we appreciate that. And we know Kathy looked around for something like this for the residents that would be no cost and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Again, I wish we could apologize for the weather.
Makes me feel right at home.
Yeah. I know you were supposed to come down to one in...
No, he asked for a nice weather.
In February. You were supposed to come to a meeting in February, we called you and told you there's a blizzard, and then come in April and it's snowing.
Well, you turned on the sun yesterday, so...
But yesterday was 73, I know it was.
It was.
I was down in Cleveland and it was 73 because they asked, "Where's your color?" I says, "It's warm out."
It was beautiful yesterday.
But see, we give you differences, changes.
Of course, from Syracuse, here used to snow.
Oh, yes.
Oh, you're from Syracuse. You've got some serious snow. This is like nothing.
Well, this is coming tomorrow, so I'll be have two days of snow to follow at home.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming and thank you very much. Kathy, thank you for all your work and effort on this.
Kathy.
Well, you two argue that out, but thank, whoever's responsible, thank you. I say it's Kathy, so thank you again. Takes us to number five.
Hey, John.
Hi, how are you?
Today, we are here just to finalize a financial report for our Project 1613 where we put some drainage in as a, basically, prerequisite to doing some other paving down the road. Total cash receipts and disbursements were the same, $85,620, and everything's been paid out from the order and we just need to paperwork finalize.
Okay.
I'm good.
Oh, you've got to read it, I'm sorry.
The Jogga County Airport Authority is requesting the board approve and authorize the Vice President of the Board to execute the final federal financial report SF425 for FAA Project AIP 33900541613.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye. Thank you very much.
And I did change it.
Okay.
So...
Would you just send that to me?
You cross this out. I'm here or down here?
You just sent it right next to the...
Here.
I just put your name on there.
She's not, she's in Columbus or somewhere.
Denise, she's in Columbus and her next person in line was sick.
So you're going to just present it? This is, Alexis Nexus is an application that if you're a lawyer, you can get on it and you can find all the court cases that pertain to what you're doing. That's what Alexis Nexus is, if you wondered. It's an application and I think we think they should pay for that service.
Right, right.
It's rather than having a lot of books that have to get updated all the time, Alexis Nexus is at the latest.
I think they're, here they're allowing for like an interface for payment for services and legal and title offices.
Yeah, this is a, this is, she said this is for their credit card services and the previous company that they were using this as a savings from what was previously being used. I go ahead with that.
Go ahead and read number six.
The Clerk of Court's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the Vice President of the Board to execute the Alexis Nexus vital check net working for a credit payment solution service agreement for credit card services for both the legal and title offices.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye. Motion passes. Takes us to seven. Hi, Kelly.
Good morning. I know. This is our semi-annual report for the Revival and Loan Fund. This report we do twice a year is housekeeping. We have to budget and reconcile between power records to the auditor's records to the state records and we balance just fine. And this is for the period of June, or July 1st through December 31st.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the Vice President of the Board to execute the EDRL semi-annual report for the period July 1st, 2015 to December 31st, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye. Do this or does Kelly do this up here?
No, that's, that's just...
Number eight.
Morning.
Morning. Right? You got the new...
I actually not that you have to...
I was going to say, there was one on the table.
Yeah, I got it right now.
And number nine has been pulled.
Okay. So the first one we're looking at is number eight.
Number eight, correct.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the contract to look at the intersection and then improve it over there at Monroe and Taylor May.
Okay.
Again, any specific questions?
What was the estimate on that?
The estimate was too high.
So came in a little higher, not much.
Yeah, there's a difference between these intersections and a straight resurfacing project or something, but it'll be on the inspectors then to efficiently manage the costs out there and do a good job of that.
You have two streets coming together, four corners, you never know what you're going to have. I've been around there, I gotta tell you. I've been there, I'll be there.
Christie, can you read the number eight?
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute the UNICEF contract for the Lip Clip Company LLC for the improvement of the intersection of Monroe CH 32 and Taylor May Road TR 186 and Arbor Township in the amount of $260,028.11.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy? Commissioner.
Aye.
Okay, then, sounds like the next one we're moving to is the 33% low limit reduction. We pull those signs now because the weather's beautiful and there's no snow or frost.
Sorry.
Oh, wait, that kind of changed. Hopefully, that's only going to be about a day or so here, but the major freeze thaw is over with, so it's time to pull those signs and we're requesting the Commissioner to approve that.
We have your guarantee on that major part?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I woke up this morning and looked out and I'm like, really? 70 degrees, stayed three days in a row and then 30 degrees and snow?
Yeah. Gives you a little air conditioning.
Christie, if you could read number 10?
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board release the 33% low limit reduction on all county highways and township roads to be effective April 25th, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Okay, so this is the resurfacing of wood and road. Kind of goes in the beginning, you know, we did some maintenance on it the past year, actually, two years, and kind of, you know, did some widening, just some cleaning up of the ditches. Much more efficient and safer now and now the idea is to tie it all in together with some fresh asphalt.
That's right. Okay.
Would you read number 11?
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 14-0542 to order the improvement of Wood Road CH 25 Sections A 3D and Chergan Hounded Townships. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the cover sheet for the specifications booklet for the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, May 14, 2014, at 2:00 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on April 24, 2014, on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Thank you.
That takes us to the next one and you guys...
Do you want us up here for that?
Yes.
Says the County Engineer, yeah.
Well, we're part of it, yes, we're certainly part of it.
Part of several organizations. These two programs, which...
Face, yeah, this is for the stormwater, so there's six parties to this. Right, and there's three of them because there's one to be executed with Russell signing, one with Bainbridge signing, and one with Chester opening the three townships in Phase Two.
Correct, and I'm certainly not an NPS expert, but essentially, the engineers role with this, it's just one of those standards that comes in and everyone has to be a party to it. And we're going to handle the inspection of it and then also the management of it when we're out on the roads and we're designing projects and inspecting them to bring them to a standard of that, just at least with those three or four townships that are in the Phase Two section. And eventually, we're all going to be going that way, at least for right now, it just involves the southwestern side of the county.
So, we got three?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you would read that, I'd appreciate it. Yeah, I know, this is ridiculous. What do we have, 18 to sign?
First three.
Parties, yes. We're going to put that off until after... I mean, otherwise, these people will be here all day while I sign my names.
Very neat, so...
All right, I tried to separate them.
You could do like Carrota County did a rubber stamp.
Oh, no, can't do rubber stamps.
I asked about the rubber stamp, we're not alive.
The Commissioner's Office...
Well, that's because it's Jogga, not Carrota.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute a memorandum of understanding regarding Ohio EPA, NPDE, a Phase Two program in coordination by and between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners, Jogga County Drainage Engineer, Jogga Soil and Water Conservation District, Jogga County Health District, Russell Township, and the Jogga County Department of Water Resources. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute a memorandum of understanding regarding Ohio EPA, NPDE, a Phase Two program in coordination by and between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners, Jogga County Drainage Engineer, Soil and Water Conservation District, Jogga County Health District, Bainbridge Township, and the Jogga County Department of Water Resources. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute a memorandum of understanding regarding Ohio EPA, NPDE, a Phase Two program in coordination by and between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners, Jogga County Drainage Engineer, Jogga Soil and Water Conservation District, Jogga County Health District, Chester Township, and the Jogga County Department of Water Resources.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye. That's all three. Right, yeah.
Oh, yes, a great day.
Can't we, this is just a question, I mean, when we do this, and all that verbiage is the same, with the only difference being Russell Township, Bainbridge Township, and Chester Township, can't we read it one time in list of townships or do they each have to be done?
They each get the...
They're separate... They each have to be done into... Separate MOU. You're acting on each one of them with each township.
Get their moment under the sun individually.
All right, all right. I just, when I read it, I'm thinking, that's a lot of words for... Who says government is efficient?
Well, they want to make sure they aren't covered.
Well, maybe somebody objects to one, that I can see, you know, they're going to vote for two and not for...
They are separate MOUs between our various towns.
Well, if they don't do it, they'll get charged pretty big.
I'll be signing these afterward. If you, you want to start yours now?
Yeah, you could start, yeah, you could bring him here, I can listen and sign at the same time.
Me to sign 18 of these.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in, guys.
Okay, thank you, please.
Excuse me, just before I leave, can I ask one question? Has anybody read this MPS document? You know what that is, understand what that is, from a Commissioner's perspective? I'm not asking these guys, but I know they've read it.
Yes.
You read the MPEDS?
Yes, many years ago.
Personally, I did not read it, but I'm told that they had a presentation and read it in the past. Okay?
National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. So do we, do we think that we have an understanding of what that is that we just voted on?
We have an understanding of what it is. The Phase Two program is put forth by the state and it's mandatory for those communities in the stormwater tube areas where they have to have something done and if not, they get fined heavily for it and they have to have a plan for their stormwater runoff. Whether we like it or not, it's a law.
And so, this is something mandatory and we're mandatorily being told we have to vote on it and you guys are good with that?
We're voting.
You just voted, you were dictated by...
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Right, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, Skip, thank you. Thank you, Skip, thanks. We're moving on with the meeting.
Okay.
Number 15. Department of Job and Family Services. Would you read that? I don't see anyone.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and authorize the Jogga County Auditor to change the name for Fun 2026 General Juvenile Emergency Service Plant.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye. Sign.
Nope.
Number 16. Water Resources, Doug?
Yep. Good morning.
Good mornings.
All right, first thing on the list here is Brian Benson. He actually got his operator license and he was a maintenance worker, so for the contract when they imposed it internally, he gets to be promoted to operator, which is heavy need and very much appreciated.
That's good.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the promotion of Brian Benson to the position of Plant Operator 1, number 2326, to be effective April 14, 2014, at a rate of $18.60 per hour with a 180-day probationary period in accordance with the bargaining agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
All right, next two items, something that in the last 10 years, I might remember happened, but we're actually going to tentatively award a sewer contract for wastewater and for the sewer itself for the Thompson sewer projects. Both of them, the lowest bidder was EnviroCom. We used them before in the past on the Opelika project a couple of years ago and the one project came in under by 16% and the one was over by almost 10%. So on average, overall, it was over almost 5% total for the grand total.
Oh.
And we still have the money set aside in the project, so we're hoping by, when you, because the USDA yesterday gave us our sources and funds, so we're hoping by the end of the project, if everything stays as it is, we'll be able to apply $1.2 million towards the revenue on parkment, that's refinancing, 2.4, 2.3 down to 2.75.
Oh, that's a considerable save.
Yeah, so that's all that extra grant money we fought for, so around $1.2 million is your money here, so...
That's good to hear, then.
Yeah.
What's the timeline on this guest, I mean, estimated timeline?
My guess, they'll start May 1st and hopefully they'll be done by December, January, so then the residents will, indeed, you can't do it in the middle of winter to tie in, so then they'll tie in during the spring of next year.
Starting a year from now.
Yeah, so they'll be able to tie in from maybe February, March, all the way through Labor Day probably. They'll be required to have, everybody tied in by Labor Day.
By Labor Day of 15, everybody will be required to. And what's the total number that are going to be tied in there?
There's 100 sewer units total. In other, 100 sewer units total.
Oh, okay.
In other words, something like a resident, like a stockard restaurant or whatever, could be three or four equivalent units. So there's, a church could be three or four depending on the number of people in, so we go by equivalent units, so the treatment plant is built for for the 100 equivalent units.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, would you read 17 and 18 together?
Well, this has been a long time in coming, hasn't it?
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board award the bid to EnviroCom Construction Incorporated for the Thompson sewer project, Contract A, Alternative Site in the amount of $1,619,000 if they represented the lowest and best bid. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board award the bid to EnviroCom Construction Incorporated for the Thompson sewer project, Contract B, in the amount of $1,429,100 if they represented the lowest and best bid.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye. Issues pass.
All right, then the next one is for lawn maintenance for our 25 wastewater treatment plants. Actually, we tried to do it in-house and with all the overtime and the kind of full teeth every now and then, it was, we tried it one year and we decided to go back to actually going out for bid for this. We had five bidders on this and this is going to be for a two-year contract and the lowest bidder was Professional Landscape for $24,000 per year to do all of them. We have it broken down by the north and south sections, but it is basically for all 26 water treatment plants.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Professional Landscapes to perform lawn maintenance at the northern and southern locations for the year 2014 to 2015 in the amount of $16,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Speedy?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Muir?
Aye.
Okay, then the last one on the agenda here is for our Troyoff wastewater plant, which we are in the process of going to replace, you know, in the next couple of years. Over the winter, one of the tanks, up here, probably out of the ground, part, one end of it's in the ground, the other one's like four to five feet above the ground. We're assuming since it was built in the seventies that the anchors that were beneath it let loose, so, we, this is the, we've got two quotes here, one was for thirty-six thousand, one was for thirty-one thousand dollars, to basically lift up the tank, re-dig, and then reinstall it down in there, so hopefully, it can last for the next three, four years until we build a new treatment plant or add a pump across the river. So what we're doing here is we're increasing the service contract, we currently have a groundwork by twenty thousand, so then we can get this in there, and then still have money available for groundwork in the future if we need them for an emergency, because we already have a service contract then for, I think, around twenty, so.
Okay.
That makes all sense, I hope?
How long is that going to take?
Um, I think they'll.
Dig the tank up, receive it?
Yeah, probably two to three weeks maximum. Yeah, they need to bring a crane in, so that's going to be the big thing, crane lifting it, excavating it, and then lower it back in.
Okay, is this a duplex system where it still operates while they're fixing it?
That's right, yeah.
Maybe, would you read number twenty?
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute Contract Maintenance Form Number One, increasing the contract with Groundworks Construction LLC to cover additional emergency rehabilitation at Troyoff in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Muir?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Before this guy leaves, when we talking, you know, since we're talking sewers.
Excuse me, would you identify yourself and where you live?
Yes, my name's Alan Segaty, I live at seven-seven oh seven Country Lane, I'm a sixty-one-year resident, I'm one of the last people drafted in this county, and in regards to runoff water, I have water run out of the ditch through my barn, I have water that runs out of the ditch, runs across my property and tears it up, you know, the townships doesn't jump on that, but also talking about sewers, my father and other people's fathers in the seventies paid to build a sewer plant on River Road, in the assumption that, one, we would get to hook up the sewers, but now we're stuck putting in expensive sewer plants. Whatever happened to that? Now we're out in Troy, or Troy, putting sewer plants in, in Auburn, and I don't even know if anybody's hooked up in Auburn. So when are we getting our sewer lines? They put it in for the millionaires behind us, but they got sued. So, my question is.
I don't follow, first of all, you're, that's not a, well, the last part of it is a question, the first part's a statement.
When are we getting our sewers put down that the county promised when our parents paid for the sewer plant on River Road?
Well, let's see.
It was an agreement that was made.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I have no idea.
That would be the answer, if you're sixty-one, I'm sixty-six.
You do water to, city water?
We do, water and wastewater, depending on the location.
But you do city water?
Um, in Bainbridge, we do.
Okay.
And if by the.
Did you have a blue light sale in the last six months? What does it cost to hook up the city water in Bainbridge?
It all depends on what location you're at.
Country Lane?
A Country Lane is, it's around nine, ten thousand dollars.
Okay, did you have a blue light sale in the last year on Country Lane where you let somebody in very cheap? This is only rumor control, or rumors, but, you know, rumors are rumors.
Uh, no, not that, no.
Have you had a court case filed against you?
Uh, yes, we did, we went in the court on that, correct.
And what happened?
There was, the guy who came in to apply, he has two different properties, one on.
River Road?
On the River Road, and one on Country Lane Road, I believe it is.
And what's he paying for them?
Uh, well, they're, they're two different things, uh, there's two different tapping fees, I don't know if the answer's on the one, but the one for the Country Lane is supposed to be nine, and they, there was a, when they, he applied for the application, they thought it was for the other one, so we went to court case, and they did settle in court on an agreement in between.
So.
We got the details in the office, I don't have the numbers here, it was Jerry Morik from our office was the one involved with that, I can get you the number, so.
Was it like eighteen hundred dollars?
Uh, no, if I, if I, I can call, I can call Jerry on the phone there, but I'm almost sure it was close to six or seven hundred thou, seven thousand.
Or maybe your rumor, your hearsay is different than mine.
Yeah, if you want to step over to our office, when you leave here, I can give you all the numbers.
Yes, Mr. Segaty, I appreciate you asking that here, but you really need to ask it at Water Resources, because we don't have the information, so you can go over and make an appointment with them.
I'm telling you, we had a blue light sale on the county, and you don't care.
No, I didn't say I didn't care, I said, this isn't the place to bring it up.
Yesterday.
You need to bring it up with the, the Water Resources Department, if they can't answer your question, then you will come to us.
No, I go to you first.
Well, that's out of order, and so are you, move on to the next one.
Come over to our department, I can give you all the numbers.
Why don't you go get it right now, sir?
Number twenty-one. That's fine, thank you.
Sure.
Bring it in, otherwise, I'm going to lose copy of it all.
Yes, please do. No, item twenty-one.
Squier Sanders contacted us in the past, we have been a host for Montefiore for bonds, and they are requesting to have me host again, which involves holding a public hearing with, for national bonds for Colorado Educational and Cultural Facilities Authority, so all this is, it's just a request to advertise for the public hearing in May, and then they will come in in May, and the county will receive a, pay them a five hundred dollars for being the host for holding the public hearing.
For holding the hearing. Would you please read twenty-one?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise to hold a public hearing for the proposed issuance by the Colorado Educational and Cultural Facilities Authority of a variable-rate demand revenue tax exempt loan National Jewish Federation Bond Program Series IT to be held on Thursday, May eighth, two thousand and fourteen, at ten oh five A.M. Notice of this public hearing will be advertised on April eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, on county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Muir?
Aye, motion for access, number twenty-two.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the agreement between the Jog County Board of Commissioners and Sharden Rotary to allow the Sharden Rotary to use the county parking lot located at two oh eight East Park Street in Sharden for the purposes of a parking lot fundraiser during the annual Jog County Maple Festival on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, after five o'clock P.M. through April twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen.
Make that motion.
Uh, second, I, I do have a question on that, they've done this in the past.
Yes.
They have all the necessary insurances and so on, this is the gravel lot?
Yes.
I made a motion.
Yeah, I seconded the motion, so.
Yeah, oh, for you. Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. Takes us to twenty-three. Somebody sign, to park cars?
Yeah, we get one, they get one, and Colleen gets one.
Oh, this is twenty-three, all right. Would you read twenty-three, please?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number fourteen dash zero-five-five, closing in May fifth through May ninth as public service recognition weighted to town report.
Make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.